Hello, my name is Claudia Kikekandal and I'm president of the Thurston County League of Women Voters. I want to thank TCTV for cosponsoring with us this primary candidate forum for Lacey City Council Position 3. We'll begin by asking our candidates for a two-minute opening statement and then we will be asking them some questions which we think the citizens of Lacey would like to hear the answers to. Our first candidate is Raymond Payne. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and TCTV for putting on this event and I wanted to thank the Lacey voters for paying attention and watching. My concern for the future of our neighbors' families and my family drives me to seek election to the Lacey City Council. Like many of our neighbors, quality of life played a role in me deciding to raise my family in Lacey. Over the last few years, nonsensical partisan politics have crept into Lacey government and have adversely impacted our quality of life and our development as a city. The current council's lack of vision in making Lacey is making Lacey any city USA. We can do better. Lacey needs an independent, committed, and experienced leader, qualifications I possess. I've served my country for 21 years in the United States Air Force and I've served my community for three and a half years on the planning commission. And I want to continue that service on the city council. If we tie our individual strands of experience together, making one rope, there is little we cannot accomplish. Working together, we can eliminate the BNO tax and make it a more fair tax assessment. We can reduce our traffic congestion and make our government more open and transparent. And I pledge to you today that I will not accept any funds until the job is done. I pledge to you today that I will put, if I'm elected, in a trust fund, all monies, until I reduce the traffic by 10%, until I change the BNO tax, until I create a citizen committee for environmental sustainability. I respectfully ask for your vote so we can get started.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Jeff Gadman.
Thank you very much. I want to thank TCTV and the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. I think it's a good opportunity for us to speak with our constituents. I am currently a Lacey City Council member and we have been working on a lot of issues moving forward, trying to make the city as good as it can be. Lacey is a great community. I moved here with my family in 1968 and have lived in this area ever since. I've got very deep roots and I've seen the city grow from a rural farm community into being the urban area that it is today. I think it's very, very important that the city council works with the Economic Development Council and the Chambers of Commerce to help attract family wage jobs, jobs that pay wages that people feel like they're being successful, not just surviving. I also think it's very important that we make government operations and the decisions that government makes as open and transparent as possible. I have worked in a bureaucracy for 25 years with the county and really dislike bureaucratic policy and roadblocks to getting things done. I think it's very, very important that we support our police department and give them the resources they need to continue the safety and security that Lacey enjoys. I also think it's important that we support the fire district so that our citizens are served to the best of the fire district's ability. I also think it's important that we build on our relationship with folks up at Joint Base Lewis McCord because many of their civilian and military employees live and work in Lacey or live in Lacey and have spouses that work in Lacey. Mostly, I really want to make Lacey feel like your neighborhood. I look forward to working with my other city council members and other jurisdictions to make Lacey the unique, livable, great city that it is. Thank you.
And thank you. And our final candidate here is Mark Harris.
Hello. Thank you for hosting this event and thank you for any citizens and voters in Lacey who may be watching. I think this is very valuable and I appreciate the time. Lacey is a great place to live. My family and I chose to move here back in 1998 after I worked for a variety of assignments around the state of Washington and we choose to make it our home. My children will graduate from high school with the same people that they went through preschool with. And that's much better than the situation where I was a Navy brat moving around. I like to make sure that they have the continuity. We're heavily invested in the city and we appreciate the opportunity to talk about this and possibly serve on the city council. I bring a record of 29 years of public service to the city council if elected, three years in the Army, as well as 26 years as an officer in the Washington State Patrol. I currently supervise and manage the Capitol Police Operations, all of the police operations at our state Capitol campus, as well as a budget of approximately $8 million. No city is perfect and Lacey has its own issues. And there are several issues that I would like to address as a member of the city council. First off, first and foremost, you might expect as an officer in the State Patrol, public safety is my primary concern. In the city of Lacey, we have some horrendous traffic collisions that have killed people. We've had, they've injured friends and family of ours and we're concerned about that. Gangs in the neighborhood, thieves entering the homes, stealing our property and our identities, this has affected a lot of people that we know. Though we enjoy the lowest crime rate in 20 years, we're on the brink of having several threats affect us. Our city presents a great example of good physical planning, but our economy is still on the ropes and we need to work to strengthen the economy and bring jobs to the community. Once again, I would like to thank you for this opportunity and I look forward to the discussion.
Well, now we have some questions for the candidates and some of them touch upon some issues they've raised in their opening statements. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Harris. What is your vision for growth in Lacey?
My vision for growth in Lacey is to ensure that we follow the Growth Management Act, make sure that we are making our communities livable. We need to make sure that our tax structure and our facilities can support any sort of annexations or any sort of movement into the community. We have a lot of communities on the fringe that are in the urban growth boundaries that it would take a lot of time and a lot of resources to move those into the community. We need to make sure that we're working on the city first before we expand or before we grow and make sure that we have a nice, livable community.
Thank you. Mr. Gadman, what is your vision for growth in Lacey?
I think it's very, very important that we look at the whole picture. First, we start with looking at the big picture and then move down into looking at the neighborhood level. We are a very, very attractive place to live because of the reputation of the city around the entire country. And I think it's important that we recognize that growth is coming and that we manage that growth in a responsible way. We don't want new growth to negatively impact our existing residents because our existing residents are part of what's making this city so good to live in today. We need to work with businesses that want to locate here to make sure that those businesses locate in a way that is good for the city, good for our neighbors, and good for our families. We need to work on visions like the Gateway Town Center because that is going to be a great gem of a development in the city and it's going to help us develop in a way that is smart, manageable, and livable.
Thank you. Mr. Payne, what is your vision for growth in Lacey?
I think we need to reimagine Lacey and reimagine our older neighborhoods and start to look at those as a primary place to start growth. We have the infrastructure there, we have the roads, we have the sewer there. We could do some infill there to make sure that we're growing there first instead of with the big box mentality and spreading out. And once we look there first and then if we want to spread out, we could expand. But I think we need to reimagine Lacey and look at our older neighborhoods first.
Thank you very much. For the next question, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Gadman. What do you think the three greatest challenges are for Lacey other than the budget? And how do you propose dealing with these challenges?
Thank you. I think one of our biggest challenges relates back to the last question with the growth. We know people are coming. Most of the cities around us don't have room to accommodate a lot of growth. Lacey has a lot of land right now and I do think the infilling in the older neighborhoods is very important. It's important to the vitality of those neighborhoods. It's important to the existing residents to have new vital growth. I also think it's important that we work on attracting businesses that offer good family wage jobs, jobs that people feel proud of having and that allow them to support local businesses with, by spending money on items beyond food and fuel. I also think that we need to get intercity transit service expanded out to the Northeast County. There are a lot of residents out there right now that are underserved by intercity transit and by City of Lacey continuing to be a member of the Intercity Transit Authority, we can help guide that issue forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Payne, what do you think Lacey's three greatest challenges are other than the budget and how would you propose to deal with them?
The first challenge is traffic. Everybody I've talked to and out on the campaign trail, they want to know what are we going to do about traffic. And what I would do is work on the demand and try to promote mass transit, especially starting with our city employees. We could do flex time and work with our other jurisdictions, the state and others that have workers that live, work in Lacey. We could start 15 minutes later or 20 minutes later. And those are some of the things I would do about traffic. We need to do something about encouraging young, innovative entrepreneurs to come into town and to grow our economy. And one way we could do that is to adjust our BNO tax to make it more fair. And finally, we've got to look at climate protection. That is coming upon us and nobody is talking about it. And I would create a citizen group, a citizen advisory group, to advise the council on climate protection and sustainability issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, what do you think the three greatest challenges are other than the budget and how would you deal with them if elected?
As I mentioned, public safety. We have a lot of issues on the sidelines that could threaten our community. As I mentioned, the gangs, the thieves, the traffic issues, which is in line with what Mr. Payne said about the congestion, although many of the high-speed collisions are caused when there is no congestion. Public safety, first and foremost, we need to make sure the police have what they need. Second, economic development. We're not going to have corrections in the budget and in the other issues until we have economic development and we support the community as well as supporting local businesses. Third, we need to talk about how these decisions are made by the city council. We have a very young city council. We have most with two years or less on and we have a lot of changeover. We have members leaving the council this year and we need to make sure that we put and apply a common sense approach in all the decisions we make in the future.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start this next question with you, Mr. Payne. What are your funding priorities for Lacey? You've already brought this up. And do you support charging impact fees and why or why not?
I do not support charging impact fees because I think the way we're doing it now with having some of the mitigation fees for projects, I think that has served as well. And I do not support impact fees. My funding priorities would be, number one, finding a way to reduce the BNO tax to make it more fair. That's going to be one. And number two, the traffic. We could use the intelligent transportation system, which costs $25,000 per intersection through my research. And that's something we could do and if we needed to, I would support going to the people and asking for a transportation benefit district be set up, which we could charge up to $20 per vehicle tab, car, but it would be a decision of the voter. Obviously, we have to continue to fund our parks and we need to continue to fund our streets, but we can't continue to use the grant money that we're doing because that is, the grant money is going to dry up. It's coming from the state and the state is contracting, the federal government is contracting. We've got to find another funding stream for transportation or down the route, we're not going to be able to fund our transportation projects. So those are the things, those would be some of my funding priorities.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, what are your funding priorities and do you support charging impact fees? Why or why not?
My funding priorities talk about fiscal responsibility because first off, our economy's on the ropes. It's not going to get better in the near future. We're looking at the potential of five years of reductions with the city budget. We need to make sure that we are taking care of the basic services before we do anything else. The public safety is paramount, but even looking at that, the property taxes don't fund all of public safety. That has to come out of the general fund. I agree with the concept of cutting the BNO tax. However, that goes directly into the general fund and supports basic services, so I'm not a fan of cutting any revenue sources immediately. I'm also not a fan of assessing impact fees or any other fees that are going to cause unnecessary burdens on the building community, the construction community, which is already on the ropes as well. And I think we need to basically take a defensive posture at this time until the economy comes back and then we help the budget come back.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Gadman, your funding priorities and specifically, do you support impact fees? Why or why not?
Thank you. I think one of the biggest funding priorities that we have is the transportation issue because we are getting more traffic. We need to figure out ways to try and reduce traffic. Part of that is within filling our older neighborhoods with community-friendly businesses so people don't feel like they have to drive to the store for that gallon of milk or that hammer they need to buy. Also, funding intercity transit. We also need to fund our parks and infrastructure maintenance. We need to make sure that our roads continue to be passable. Need to make sure our parks continue to be the great parks that they are. As far as the BNO tax, we're all working on looking at getting rid of the city portion of that right now, but we got to do it in a way that doesn't hurt our existing residents. With impact fees, I do believe that new development must pay for the impacts it has on our community and their surrounding residents. I don't know that impact fees are necessarily the best way to do that, but I do believe we need to mitigate the additional costs that the city has when new development happens.
Thank you very much. This is a new question and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Harris. Would you support a home rule charter for Thurston County? And why or why not? And would you envision Lacey participating?
I'm really not familiar with what a home rule charter is.
The home rule charter is like a constitution for your county in which municipalities can participate or not. The three largest counties in the state of Washington have home rule charters, as do the three most environmentally unique counties such as San Juan County. So with that explanation, do you think you would be interested?
On the surface, that sounds like a good idea. I think anything we do to consolidate government services, increase efficiencies, and get a shared collective vision for our entire community that helps outside the city of Lacey, I think that's valuable. It sounds valuable. I'll need to research on that and understand a little bit more for the future, but...
For your information and for the viewers, the League of Women Voters of Thurston County has done a recent study on local government options and it is posted on our website. Mr. Gadman, would you support a home rule charter for Thurston County? Why or why not?
I think the home rule is a good idea and I think that there are certainly valid reasons to investigate maybe going down that path. The important points to cover in that investigation though are each of the cities has a unique identity and it's part of the reason their residents choose to live where they live. And I really don't want to see Lacey lose its identity as being a unique spot in the Puget Sound region or in Thurston County. Having said that, if we can bring efficiencies to government and administration that will help the residents of Lacey and the residents of the county as a whole, I think it is a good path to follow.
Thank you very much. Mr. Payne, would you support a home rule charter for Thurston County and Lacey's participation therein? Why or why not?
I'll admit that I haven't been up to speed on that, but just from what you described, I would decline. I think for the reasons Jeff stated, our identity, I would not want Lacey to lose its identity. The identity was why I came here and why many of my neighbors live here. And for that reason, I wouldn't do anything that would lose that. And I believe from my initial blush at this, I believe it would happen. So I would say no.
Thank you very much. For the next question, we'll start with you, Mr. Gadman. There have been many comments from Lacey citizens about your traffic cameras. From your experience, do you think the use of traffic cameras is justified and effective?
We have one traffic camera right now, or actually two cameras at the same intersection and that at Pacific Avenue and Slater Kenny Road. And the traffic camera that's installed there right now has reduced the number of accidents that have happened at that intersection. And the accidents that do happen are slower speed accidents that reduce the cost to the insurance companies and to the individuals involved. I don't necessarily believe that wholesale installing more cameras is necessarily a good idea for our constituents or the well-being of our citizens. We need to make sure that our citizens understand that we are trying to protect them and make the city as livable as possible, but at the same time, I don't want the citizens of my city to feel like it's Big Brother watching all the time. So I think it needs to be very carefully studied, very carefully implemented, and done in a way that our residents don't feel is a negative thing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Payne, your opinion on traffic cameras? Are they effective and are they justified?
My opinion is I don't like them and I would like to see it removed. Effective or not, I think we could use other methods. I don't like us taking pictures of our, it's just like Jeff said, the Big Brother concept. I don't like that. And I don't like that a private company somewhere else processes it and sends it back to the state. I think it's a bad idea and I think we could find other ways to serve the same purpose. I would take them out.
Thank you. And Mr. Harris, your opinion on the use of traffic cameras? Justified or effective?
I hear some information that they may be somewhat effective in reducing collisions. I'm not convinced yet. I'm still investigating this. I have a lot of concerns about any sort of oppressive police presence that is resembling anything sort of Big Brother-ish. And my first blush, I have a lot of concerns about it. I wonder why we couldn't use other methods to achieve the same goals and that would include effective traffic management systems that are more intelligent and that would reduce the incidence of violations that sometimes appear to be just minor violations like California rolling stops instead of the high-speed intersection collisions that cause the injuries and fatalities. So my thought on that is that we should do something else. I'm not concerned, I don't hear a lot of good about it from the community. It seems to be more of a revenue generating event, more so for the company than the city even, and I would need to see more. I'm still investigating that and I need more on that.
Thank you very much. Now, this is our last question before closing remarks and we'll start with you, Mr. Payne. What opportunities do you see for increasing and improving interjurisdictional cooperation vis-à-vis other municipalities, the county, the state, and the Port of Olympia?
I think one opportunity is mass transit. I think we could participate in trying to make mass transit more workable for people. I use mass transit every day and I tell you, sometimes you're sitting there, I go eight miles and you're sitting there for 45 minutes to go eight miles. And so I think that's something we could work on in an interjurisdictional way. And that was, that's one of the main things I would say.
Mr. Harris, what opportunities do you see for increasing and improving interjurisdictional cooperation?
Without affecting the identity of the local communities, there are opportunities to increase cooperation. Traffic management on a regional level makes sense. Just coming to this interview, I sat at a light right in front of City Hall for probably three minutes with no traffic coming the other way. Our traffic system needs to be smarter than that to understand when the cars are moving. We need to make sure that we are cooperating with the local EMS services, which are now provided for us, though we don't have a voice for it on the city council. We need to make sure that we open the lines of communication with the Fire District 3 and fix whatever is left over from two years ago.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Gadman, what opportunities do you see for increasing and/or improving interjurisdictional cooperation?
Thank you. I think that the transit/transportation issue, those two issues go hand in hand and one can't be dealt with without the other. And it is something that is a regional concern and I think that is very important for all three of the cities in the northern part of the county and the county to work together on. Increasingly, we're getting more traffic from Yelm and I think Yelm needs to be included in that discussion. At the same time, there's social services for the less fortunate in our communities is a great opportunity because that also is a regional problem that needs to be dealt with. We need to work together with our partners in the other jurisdictions to work on attracting the family wage jobs. We need to work and make sure that intergovernmental agreements with the various law enforcement agencies in the area are drawn up to make sure that they all get the information flow that they need to help protect us. The city needs to work with the school district and with the fire district because we all work with many of the same constituents.
Thank you so much. It's now time for your wrap-up statements. You've given the citizens of Lacey and also those who are watching a lot of food for thought. I'd like to start with you, Mr. Harris. You have a minute to sum up what you'd like to tell your voters.
Thank you again. This is quite a forum. I think we could talk about this for hours and I would actually enjoy that sometime. I get the feeling we're going to meet in other forums as well. Thank you for watching. It's important that you're involved and that you're knowledgeable about the issues here today. We talked about these issues. If I'm elected, I will bring extensive management and leadership experience, a strong base of knowledge on public safety issues, and the proven ability to work with diverse groups and conflicting opinions to reach a successful outcome. I pledge to listen to the citizens of Lacey on all sides of an argument before making any tough decisions. I also pledge to be a nonpartisan city council member. This is a nonpartisan position. It needs to stay that way. Once again, my name is Mark Harris and I'd appreciate your vote in the upcoming primary.
Mr. Gadman, what are your final thoughts today?
First of all, I want to thank you and TCTV for sponsoring this event. This is great. I think we've got a great start to a debate here. I really wish to continue serving as Lacey City Council member. I think I bring good ideas to the table. The other council members, six out of, or five out of the other six have endorsed me for this race. And I believe that means that we are working as a cohesive group and can achieve great things for Lacey, to continue to make Lacey the greatest city that can possibly be. I think that with your vote, I could continue my community involvement. I'm deeply rooted in this community and very concerned with how we continue into the future. The city can be, continue to be great and I think with your vote, we can get there.
And Mr. Payne, your concluding remarks, please.
Again, once again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and TCTV for having this event. And I thank my partners actually for coming here and to participate. I think it was very instructive for the Lacey voters. But the choice couldn't be clearer. If Lacey wants an independent, committed, experienced leader, I'm the choice. And regardless, Lacey voters, of whether you have an R or a D or an I behind your name, I hope that you would look at the facts, research each of our websites and our information and our plans for the future that we have out there and make the best choice that you can. I trust your judgment. It's your future, Lacey. You've got to own it. Thank you.
And thank you all. Once again, I'm Claudia Kikekandal and I'm president of the Thurston County League of Once again, I'm Claudia Kikekendall, President of the Thurston County League of Women Voters, with many thanks to TCTV and our candidates for engaging in this forum this morning, and I wish you all well in the remainder of your campaign.